...celebrate our teachers, but Sunday. Sunday's Mother's Day. And I always find it appropriate because moms tend to be our first teachers. And trying to figure out something worthwhile to say, I stumbled across a couple of things this afternoon. Abraham Lincoln said, "All that I am and all that I shall be, I owe to my angelic mother." And I think from a boy's perspective, my mother always had this ability, no matter where I was, to pull me back to my senses. "Only One Mother" by George Cooper. Hundreds of stars in the pretty sky, hundreds of shells on the shore together, hundreds of birds that go singing by, hundreds of lambs in the sunny weather, hundreds of dewdrops to greet the dawn, hundreds of bees in the purple clover, hundreds of butterflies on the lawn, but only one mother, the wide world over. So let's keep our mothers and our teachers in our prayers this month. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good listening. Okay, in the event of a fire or an emergency, our emergency access are located to the rear of the chamber. You can also get out down to my left, down the stairs and up to the parking lot. Kathy, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Renier.
Here.
Mrs. Ungary.
Here.
Mr. Cruzel.
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc.
Tina.
Here.
Mr. Neville.
Here.
Mrs. Thurston.
Here.
Mr. Grady.
Here.
Chairman Serard.
Here. For the record, Ms. LeBlanc gets called in, for those who didn't hear her on the phone. Dr. Schuman, board guests.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have several members of our high school robotics team, Buzz Robotics, and they are here along with several of their mentors. You can see they're all in yellow, and they're going to come up and introduce some people to you and show you some things and tell you a little bit about this year's program. So, folks, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Alessia Manzi.
I'm Curtis Calliger.
I'm Caitlin Chapel. The mentors we have with us today are Bob Skagney, Peter Polis, Steve Olson, Suzanne Tuohy, Jim Moran, Bob Rizzotto, Earl Ball, Stu Calror, and Chris Kennedy.
All three of us here are seniors, and we're going to give you a little overview of our year. The kickoff for this year's first robotics challenge was on Saturday, January 7th, and the game Steamworks was unveiled. This year's game was as complex as any game we have ever faced. There were many ways to solve several engineering challenges, and as is typical with Buzz Robotics, we set out to solve all of them all and build two robots at the same time. The build season had started, and it was game on. The complexity of the challenge, combined with moving into a new area in the former Fermi High School building, did not afford us any time to finalize our robot's autonomous modes or give our drivers more than just a few hours of drive practice. This put us behind the learning curve in our first district competition in Waterbury. We finished 3-8, ranked 35th out of 42 teams, but we were picked by the fifth alliance captain to join their alliance for the elimination portion of the tournament. We were eliminated in the quarterfinals, but learned what we needed to do to improve.
In the Hart River District event, which we finished 8 wins, 4 losses, which ranked us 7th out of 42 teams. We were learning, but after becoming the fifth alliance team captain, we were again eliminated in quarterfinals of the elimination portion of the tournament. After two eliminations, we did not rank high enough in New England to qualify for New England District Championships in New Hampshire. Because we are a national chairman's award winner, the World Championships in Houston, Texas were next. On the Roebling Field, we finished with 7 wins, 3 losses, and we had a final ranking of 21st out of 66 world-class teams. We were not selected to compete in eliminations, but we competed in a field of 66 district and regional winners from around the world, including 30 teams from Israel, Turkey, Canada, Mexico, China, and Australia. We continued to improve throughout the competition season, as with every year. We learned new lessons that we will carry with us as we move on to next year.
For this year's build season, it was six weeks long, so we had about 183 possible hours to design, build, and learn how to compete with this year's robot. We students, on average, were involved 85% of these hours. To give you perspective, that is equivalent to almost four weeks of a full-time, 40-hour-a-week job on top of attending high school full-time, all during a six-week time period. Buzz Robotics is grateful to this board, our sponsors, and our sponsors for following us to make this commitment. This game is not about winning. By building a robot year after year, year after year, that moves when we push on the joystick, that actuates a device that we have helped design and manufacture, we've already won. As you will see in the very short presentation called "It's Not a Robot," Buzz Robotics is about the opportunity to create the future with a running start. For that, we offer a heartfelt thank you to Dr. Schuman and you board members for your support.
We have two videos with us. One is from our competition, and another is about our robotics, about First Robotics, and how we're not just robots.
Let's see what they can do. They're very close tonight. That's a bad decision. Run along, nothing on water. That's one, two, three, there they are. They're moving on. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three seconds remaining. One and zero. These drivers are now taking control. Let's see what they can do. They're very close tonight. That's a bad decision. Run along, nothing on water. That's one, two, three, there they are. They're moving on. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's one more. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
We have a lot of senior events coming up such as Prom Friday, Senior Picnic and Class Night. We have our Academic Awards Night, May 25th, and we have a series of guest speakers coming over the next couple of weeks such as the Head of Genetic Medicine at, from Bay State Hospital, the Navy Nuclear Field Coordinator, and a Professor of Microbiology and a Darwin Impersonator. So those are all exciting events.
Thank you, ladies. Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two events, I'm sure Mrs. Enger will speak to the EHS opening ceremonies that will be held on Saturday this week. Hopefully, the weather is going to cooperate. We'll have a wonderful ceremony. And on May 16th, it's a Tuesday night, 6 o'clock, the Lego building tomorrow celebration will be held again at the Stowe Early Learning Center. If you want to come by and see what some of the, our students have been able to put together with different Lego bricks as well as the Lego robotic program we do. So you'll be, all that will be on display if anybody wants to come see it. The May events are also listed in your booklet. And just ahead, to give you an update, we began our graduation meetings for the graduation event at Enfield High School. We know it's going to be double the size of the graduate. All the graduates will be on one field. Good meeting today. We expect to plan for between 2,000 and 2,600 people attending that event. And we do believe that, as you saw us talking to Comey from ETV right before, in the event, we have to come inside. We think we can put about 1,600 in the gymnasium, another 800 in the auditorium, and perhaps another 400 or 500 in the cafeteria. Just working on now the technology to be able to livestream that. So as in the past, an indoor event was an absolute catastrophe. We're going to be in an air-conditioned facility with hopefully a lot of room for, again, over 2,000 people to see it indoors and many more outdoors. So we're looking forward to that event in June.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. Audiences. Again, during this portion, we're going to limit our comments to three minutes. We ask that you state your name and address for the record. Mr. Larson?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Larson, and I'm actually the principal at the Krec Public Safety Academy at 1617 King Street in Enfield. And I was just coming down to the Board. This is actually my third school year there. Actually, this, at the end of this year will be my second full year, but I've been there in the school for three years. And I wanted to come, and I just said, you know what? You've been here three years. It's about time you go down and introduce yourself to the Board of Education in the town. I've had, Dr. Schuman has actually been over to the building. He's been great, outstanding. But for me, I just wanted to come and say that I love the Enfield community. We're excited to be a part of it. And what I really wanted to do tonight is come out and invite the Board of Ed at any time, anytime you want. You don't have to call. Come on up. You can come to the school. You come see me. Get a tour of the building. You go in the classrooms and see how we're doing up there. We got a phenomenal staff. We've, we got a great admin team, and we got some good stuff going on up there. And I'd love to start working with some partnerships with the Enfield community. But the big event that we're working on coming up in May, May 24th to be exact, is what we call our Public Service Day. And, you know, we're called the Public Safety Academy, but we're kind of expanding our scope in saying that it's not just about police, firefighters, and EMTs, but it's about giving back to your community and having all of our kids value that. So on that day, with the exception of our ninth grade, our ninth grade will stay in-house and they will do a, we'll have local agencies come in and they'll be doing some public safety competitions and activities within the building. Kind of, it kind of revolves around like an Amazing Race kind of theme in the building. It's pretty exciting. It's pretty cool. But then the rest of our grades, so our seventh, our eighth, our 10th and 11th grade are all going out into the community. Our 11th grade specifically is going to three locations here in Enfield. Our 10th grade is going to Rocky Hill in Windsor, some veterans' hospitals and cemeteries out there, especially with Memorial Day coming up. Our seventh grade is going down to Adrian's Landing and cleaning up the Connecticut River. And our eighth grade is going to some of our elementary schools to do some reading and some work with the younger kids there. The bottom line is, we love our community. We are instilling in our kids how important it is to give back to our community. We want to invite you all out on that day. It's roughly between 9:00 and 12:00, from 9:00 to 12:00 noon on the 24th. If you want to come up, by all means, I will email that whole day and its itinerary to you all, and please feel free to come up. We'd love to have you. But I wanted to say, I wanted to introduce myself and just say that I'm looking forward to, you know, any and all partnerships that we can do with the community. And, you know, for the two reports that you guys made, that sounds like some outstanding, is the ice cream social open to all community members? Because I just, I'm just wondering. And the robotics team, that was phenomenal. Great stuff. So, hi. Just want to introduce us as the Public Safety Academy. I do bring with me eight years of military service behind me and trying to shape that school to be the best it could possibly be.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any other audiences? Any other audiences? Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Board member comments. Mr. Neville. Actually, Ms. LeBlanc.
Tina, do you want to make any comments?
Not much.
Okay. Got a little bit of laryngitis here, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Mr. Neville.
Just a couple of things. One, just a thank you to Buzz. I made most of my comments to the young people that are up here, but we are very, very proud of you and what you bring to the district. You represent us very, very well as a community, and I think you have grown as an organization over all these years. And I'm looking out here at the mentors, and I've seen a lot of you here for all the years that you've been here. He's saying you're still working full-time jobs. I don't think, I think some of you have been retired for a few years, and this has become a full-time job. So, I mean, the kids do a great job, but they couldn't do it without you, and just thank you very, very much for all that you do. And just, I'd ask everybody to come out and celebrate on Saturday. It's a big deal. You know, many of us have been on this board for the entire time that we went through the process of developing it, six years, and watching it grow and seeing all the pictures and the, you know, the website and all that stuff as it kind of evolved out of the hill there. It's a fabulous school, and it's a tribute to the town, and I think it's something that we can all be proud of. So please, come out and celebrate with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Ms. Thurston.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Mr. Grady. Thank you, Mr. Grady. Mr. Rainier.
I just want to, I say, congratulations to Buzz. Great work out there. Secondly, I want to echo your comments, Mr. Chairman, in regards to Teacher Appreciation Month, and give my appreciation to those teachers as well. And finally, in regards to the K-2 reorg, I'd spoken with Dr. Schuman on this as well, and it seems to be moving seamlessly with the, with all the students and the principal at Hale in regards to what that's looking like moving forward and those students going forward. So I think parents should be informed in the next month or two, Dr. Schuman?
That is correct.
Okay. So parents should be informed about the next month or two about the transition and what that's going to look like. And I thank all the admins in your office for that transition as well. That's it. Thank you.
Before I go, thank you, Mr. Rainier. Before I go to Ms. Enger, Ms. Thurston has changed her mind.
I did. I was trying to figure out how I would word this, but I know recently the Enfield community lost somebody very near and dear to their heart, Kayla, Kayla Pocorni. I apologize. So I just wanted to let her family know that we are thinking of her. I personally have never met Kayla, but I know many people that have, and I know she was a true inspiration. I have a dear friend that works at the Children's Medical Center on the floor where Kayla was, and I know that the day that she passed, they were devastated. And it's not going to be the same without Kayla. So I just, I felt that needed to let the family know that we are all thinking of them, and she will be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Ms. Enger.
I was going to save my comments for the committee comments, but I'll make them now. Wanted to invite everyone to our dedication ceremony that's going to be this Saturday. It's going to start at 11:30. Lieutenant Governor Wyman will be there, the governor's foot guard. We're going to have a ribbon cutting. The building committee will be honored. There'll be some light refreshments, and the building will be open so people can tour the school and really get a good look. I know there's a lot of curiosity about how it all turned out, but it's absolutely beautiful. So I hope everyone's going to come out for that. Also, there's going to be a free concert at night, and that's going to start at 7:00 PM, and that will be featuring Cassandra Kubinsky, who's on the Top 100 Billboard Chart. I don't know if you've heard some of her music, but she's awesome. Also, the Enfield Honors Choir, Sage King, Funky Dogs, and June. So we've got a great lineup, and I hope everyone's going to come out and check it out.
July, August, and September, too?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enger. Mr. Cruzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things. Just a reminder, Kite meets every Wednesday at 5:30 over at the Stowe Learning Center, and it's a great organization. And this past Wednesday, we did a self-assessment of our, of Kite. And one of the things that we found was, out of the 10 categories, was, let me think here what it was. Oh, I lost it. But anyway, it's a great organization. If you put out the website up for Kite, the control room, please, so everyone can see. Well, they'll get to it. There it is. It's, I woke on what I wanted to say. Well, I'll come back to it. All right. Reminder that tomorrow night is the FOIA, Freedom Information, Public Forum over at the great room of the senior center. It's at 6:30 PM, and it's a great way to learn what FOIA is, Freedom of Information Act. And it's put on by Tom Hennig, and it's, and also the town attorney will be present too for any questions or concerns. So that's tomorrow night at the senior center. And then a reminder also to town employees that this Thursday, there is a biometric screening at JFK Cafeteria between 2:15 and 4:45. And this is important for all our town employees to go through this for our employee benefits package, to keep our employee insurance costs to a minimum. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzel. Again, thanks to Buzz Robotics. You guys make us proud. Thanks to the mentors. You guys, without you guys, the Buzz Robotics program wouldn't be what it is today. So thank you for all your hard service and dedicated, all your hard work and dedicated service. To everyone who's taking a test coming up, good luck to you. I'm fairly confident you guys will do pretty well, but good luck to all you guys. We're rooting for you. Again, the 13th, we have the opening, the official grand opening ceremony for the public to enjoy the new high school. Those are all good things. Another good thing, and I was, I was kind of hemming and hawing whether or not I would recognize it or not, but I'm gonna anyway, U.S. News and World Report ranked Enfield 26th in the state. Now, we're some, there was some criteria that they'd used that I had some questions about, and apparently that if you didn't have a higher than 75% graduation rate, to be fair, they didn't grade you. And then there were some outliers at the very top of the scale that they didn't include because they had certain advantages that most communities don't. But for U.S. World and News Report, which is completely unbiased from anybody else and hardly, anything but an impartial news source, rated Enfield 26th in the state, and rated Connecticut's high schools some of the highest performing high schools in the country. So I think everybody should be proud of that. I mean, anytime somebody says we're doing a great job, I'm all for it. So that was news, and it made national news, made me very, very happy. So there's some good news on the horizon, and I think we're keeping better, and Buzz Robotics, you're part of that. So let's keep it going. Unfinished business. Dr. Schuman?
None.
None. New business, approve the 2017-2019 Head Start grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, you're being asked to approve and accept approximately $250,000 in grant money for the next two years. We have our Head Start Director, Deb Clement, and Lead Teacher, Melissa LaVassour, with us to tell you a little bit about this. This is an opportunity that I'm sure we won't want to pass on, but our director will tell you a little bit about the opportunity he has in front of you.
Hello.
Thank you.
Welcome, ladies.
Good evening. Having seating issues. I'm Deb Clement, the Director of Head Start, and this is Melissa LaVassour, our Education Disability Coordinator. And as always, we like to give you a little update when we come before you, before we do the vote on the grant. We want to talk about a great family engagement. Again, it's been remarkable this year. We've had seven family nights, a winter festival, and several daytime workshops. And we're proud to say that close to 80% of the schoolchildren and parents were in attendance at these events, which is amazing. Our parent committee and policy committee were also very active, and the family advocates have been working with families to, on their action steps toward their goals, family engagement and kindergarten readiness goals. And 57 of our families, out of 102 families, now have library cards. That was one of the literacy goals that we had. So I think that's amazing for this day and age. And I also wanted to let you know that we're going to be opening, having an open house on Thursday. We're opening it to the community for families who are interested in sending their children to Head Start. We're doing recruitment for the fall. We do just have a few slots left, so we encourage anybody that's interested in the program to come Thursday night between 5:00 and 7:00. Check out the program, see the building, talk to some of the staff. Our teachers are state certified, and our children do really well. And in fact, I'm going to turn that over to Melissa. Not only do our students do really well academically, they do well in all areas of development. And I'll let Melissa.
All right. Our teachers develop individual goals with families on what they want to accomplish throughout the year and looking at our assessments to see what they want to work on. So just a couple of the areas. Our social-emotional, in the fall, 32% of our children met or exceeded the expectation for the social-emotional development area. Now, in the spring, going on, some of them going on to kindergarten, 91% of our children meet the, meet or exceed the expectation for their age group. Another area, language, 38% coming in in the fall met it. Going out, 90% are meeting the goal. The literacy skill, 35% met it in the fall, and 93% are going out, meeting or exceeding the expectation. So the teachers have worked really hard with families and with the children to really work on developing these skills. So.
All right. Now, for the grants that we are asking you to vote on tonight, there is three state grants. We have the enhancement grant, which is to extend two of our federally-funded part-day classrooms into full-day classrooms. And that one is for $89,751. And as you can see, this is a two-year grant, so each year that would be the amount for that particular grant. And then we have the Head Start Services Grant, which is for $2,804. And a portion of that is for supplies, instructional supplies for the classroom, and the balance of that is for our teaching strategies goal, which is the assessment program we use so that we can measure children's progress individually, by classroom, and by the school. Then we also have the LINK Grant. And that is the grant that we've been told to reduce by 10%. And so we are going to change it up a bit. It was in the past used for literacy, but we have seen more and more social, emotional, and behavioral concerns with our students. So what we're doing with this grant is hiring two part-time aides to be behavioral support aides in the classroom. And then we also have a part-time mental health coordinator to work with parents, staff, and children so that they can meet the social and emotional goals that the families have set for them. And that is for $30,465. They did tell us, since the state budget has not been settled, that we need to go ahead and put this in with these numbers, and then if it were to change, we would have to make an adjustment after the budget has been set. Is there any questions about the grants?
Always glad to have you folks come here and, you know, hear the good things that are going on there. In terms of the grants, you picked up in your last comments, things that concerned me. Some of these funds are state funds, and some of these funds are funded from the federal government through state, right?
Right.
Okay. Do you see an impact in terms of the funding that's coming from the federal government? Because this goes into their next budget year, which has yet to be settled.
Well, what they were doing is funding us for partial grants until they knew more what the budget was going to happen. But now that they have decided to settle a budget through September, they're going to fully fund our grant, our federal grant.
Okay, okay. But they'll cover you over to 2019, is it?
For the federal grant, it's a different time period, so it's March 1st through the end of February. So our new grant started March 1st of 2017, and it will continue through February of 2018.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Our Head Start, does it outperform national trends?
Does it do what?
Does our Head Start outperform national trends?
Well, as you can see by the statistics, we do very well. And our particular Head Start program is known not only in the community, but also the state and the region as one of the best Head Start programs there is. And I know I sound like I'm bragging, but I'm very proud of that, and we've worked really hard to become that quality program.
That's why I asked the question.
You have a chance to brag, thank you.
Okay.
And the class scores. The class scores, that's when they, that's part of our federal review, and that's when they come in and they review how the interaction is between the staff and the children, as well as between the children. And it's really, our federal money is contingent on that. If you're in the bottom 10% for your region, then your grant gets put up for rebid, and you could lose your money. So we do well on that as well. So thank you for giving me that opportunity.
There you go. Any other discussion? Can I have a motion to approve the Head Start grants?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Enger, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any other discussion? Sensing none. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Renier?
Four.
Mrs. Enger?
Yes.
Mr. Cruzel?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Tina?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Four.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Action regarding matters related to personnel. We're going to wait until after item number 17. Board Committee reports. Building Committee.
We haven't, we haven't met since the last meeting. We have a meeting coming up on the 18th, I believe.
We do have a meeting on the 13th, though, to cut a ribbon, so.
We're going to be there. I don't think it's a meeting, though. There's a meeting, but we're all going to be there and celebrate the good work that everybody's done.
And remind everyone, ahead of schedule, under budget.
There you go.
That's right.
Correctment Committee.
Again, we're meeting next Wednesday, and so I think we reported on the last month at the last meeting, so we'll be reporting out our second meeting in the month.
Finance Committee.
We're meeting next Tuesday.
Leadership Committee. We had one meeting regarding personnel and some of the personnel shifts, which we'll be discussing later. Policy Committee.
July 1st, 5:30 with Cabe representatives.
What was the date again, please?
July 1st.
No, June 1st.
I was wondering. Not again in July. I'm just, you know, forecasting it out.
June 1st. Thursday, June 1st.
Any other committees?
Do you want, do you want to do the?
You know, let's do an update on the pre-ref.
Yeah, do you want to give the update? Go ahead.
Um, just because I, you'll either start coughing or my voice will fade out. Either of you or Walter could give the update about the design of something like that. That would be helpful.
I wasn't, I wasn't there. She was the only one.
I think you were the only one at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. We were all down at Enfield High School at the budget year.
That's right. Basically, the JFK pre-ref approved the conceptual design with Silver and Vetriselli. So at this point, they're going to move forward and try to get everything filed with the state.
Those, that conceptual design, is it on the website? Do you know?
I'm not, I'm not sure that it's on the website yet. I think they have the original one, but I don't think the one with the minor changes that they asked for is up there yet.
Okay, we can find, the meeting is tomorrow night, so we'll find out a lot more and can report back after tomorrow night's meeting.
That's right. We didn't meet last week because Silver and Vetriselli was not going to have anything, any updates for us, so our meeting's tomorrow night.
Sounds great. Thank you, Tina.
Thanks, Tina. Anything else? Ms. Enger?
Hold it. Go ahead, Tina.
We had an insurance committee meeting today.
I was going to bring that up.
Do you want to give that? Do you want, do you want to give the report on that?
Walter. Walter was there. I'll have Walter do it.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. Walter's going to do it.
All right. Ms. Enger and then Mr. Cruzel.
With regard to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, we're planning it outdoors, but in case it rains, we're making provision to hold it indoors. So rain or shine, we're going to have it.
In the auditorium?
In the auditorium.
Thank you, Ms. Enger. Mr. Cruzel.
All right. So Joint Insurance Committee met today, and we went over the policy to set the, for the committee. It was a draft we went over. We added, we tweaked it a little bit. We added a few things. We should have a final draft voted on the 24th, no, 25th, and then, and have it at one of our next meetings. Well, the council's going to approve it, but we'll just, we'll bring it to one of our next meetings. And then we also set what, how this committee's going to go forward from this point on, and we're going to, we're going to set up, so they're going to amend the charge of the committee to meet at least twice a year, once in March and once in October, and just oversee the insurance from this point on. So the hard work is done, and now it's just sail the ship in the right direction and keep it afloat.
Mr. Neville.
Just joint facilities.
We've, we've been trying to schedule a joint facilities meeting, but with the budget meetings that have been going on and the other, the pre-ref and the building committee and so on, it's been hard to do that. We're hoping to pick it up on the 25th.
25th is what was.
It's a tentative date right now to pick that up. We have had a company start the process of checking out the roofs. I know they did Hasaville Memorial School. We're looking to get some professional feedback in terms of what the needs are, what the options are for us and so on. And our hope is to do that with each of the schools, that we have questions about the timeline for, the length of time we have until the roofs need to be replaced. So that's, we were hoping to do it, get it all done by the end of this year, but I think we're a little bit optimistic in trying to get it all done. So we're dealing with the first school, hopefully on the 25th, with the report that we have from a roofing company. That's it.
Any other committee reports? To the Insurance Committee and the Facilities Committee, keep up the good work. I mean, this is, so that's very clear. These are joint committees with the board in the town, working together to ensure that moving forward, that the issues that future boards and future town members will face are reduced. So, thank you, guys. Item 13, approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes, April 25th, 2017.
Approved, second.
Motion made by Ms., Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Cruzel. Any discussion, changes, or amendments? Show of hands, approved. Any abstentions? None. Approved. Accounts and payroll, none?
None.
Correspondence and communications, none? Do we have any audiences? None? I need a motion to go into executive session.
All moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cruzel, seconded by Mr. Neville. All in favor? We're currently in executive session.
And we're not returning.
And we are not returning.